Ready? Good. Good afternoon, all, and welcome to the December 1st meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence so that we can remember our troops who serve abroad in Iraq, in Afghanistan, and elsewhere in the world, and also in our own country, and those who have given their lives. So now we'll begin with public comment. Bill Clark here, Director of Cape Cod Extension Service for the county.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Two items. Item one, just wanted to acknowledge the loss of our county employee David Simser.
He was very good about that.
He was young.
Fifty-seven years old.
Oh, my God.
Outstanding guy, outstanding worker, scientist, and we're gonna miss him. So educator, researcher, big boy in our Lyme disease and entomological projects through the county. So just wanted to acknowledge that. He's been with us for over ten years with the county, and so just wanted to bring that up. And just for your information, as you know, he's been working on an EPA grant, and recently won the bronze medal for outstanding research by the EPA Northeast Region.
Is that on what particular?
On Lyme disease. Using the novel deer stations to reduce the population of deer ticks.
Yeah, I really feel very badly about that.
So that's one item, just wanted to mention that. I know you know, but just wanted to bring it up.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that.
And the other item is, I just gave you the invitations Tuesday night, next week, December 7th, we have our annual Buy Fresh By Local Cape Cod Member Meeting, and we'd like to invite you as guests to this meeting.
Yes.
Farmers, restaurants, local businesses that participate in the Buy Fresh By Local project will be there. A chef will prepare food grown locally, and Be Light Fair will have several speakers about the project and our accomplishments for the year. And as you know, we worked with the Cape Cod Fishermen's Association this year. We had our first commercially supported fishery project which went very well. And I'll be meeting with them again next week, but my guess is they're gonna be continuing with that project.
Excellent.
There were four fishermen that were involved and sold their product directly to consumers. So worked out all the kinks, and it just went very well. So we had a site for pickup here in Barnstable, and went and chatted. So it went well, so that was the first and the pilot, and onward and upward on that project.
Excellent.
So love to have you come if you have time. I realize it's a busy time of the year, but if you're able to come, it'll be at the Cultural Center in South Yonmouth.
We will be there. Yes, I'm sure I'll be there. You can count me in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Still has another engagement.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I maintain a report on housing authority.
Right. Bill, I just wanted to say that last night, there was a watershed presentation tour in Mashpee, and Rick York was discussing how the county is such a big help in the shellfish area, and how that actually does contribute to cleaning our waters as well as providing an industry here. So I just wanted to give you that you were being discussed in your department and how well it works.
Thank you. For several years now, we've been working with both oyster reefs and cohogs to not only grow them and propagate them, but to show how they help reduce the nitrogen in the estuaries. And it works.
He was saying that in the Mashpee River, he had planted, what, 10,000 oysters and our cohogs. It was oysters, and he was saying that if he had cohogs, he could even do a better job because they're a little larger and they're much smaller. And that they were able to reduce the nitrogen in that river by 5%, which kept it alive until we can actually do something on a grander scale. So it can't solve the entire problem, but it absolutely contributes.
Certainly helps. If I say five years, it was probably ten years ago. We started researching this concept, and we had some small grant, and we also used some of the county funds that we have in our budget to hire consultants to look at just how much nitrogen is fixed by oysters and cohogs. And like us, they need nitrogen for building tissue in their bodies. And they take it out of the water column and keep the water clean. And we have projects, we started out with the research in Falmouth and Mashpee, extended them to Orleans, I believe Yonmouth we have a project. But the Orleans, it was on our tour several years ago, we went to that Orleans tour, we went to Mill Pond, and started building reefs there. And there's a gentleman, actually the neighborhood helps maintain the reef, and there's a gentleman that swims just about every day during the summer there, and he said he sees a remarkable difference between where the oyster reef is and where it isn't in terms of water quality during the swim.
Right, very well.
So it works.
Yes, yes, it does. It's a natural.
Well, I think with all the interest in wastewater management, that there's significantly renewed interest in agriculture and shellfish.
Reason to my ears.
No doubt, everyone's talking about it everywhere, so.
Yep, native historic industry, and not only do we have a product that is cool, but it's also a way of helping clean up the estuaries.
Do you think you might republish that book?
The Building Book?
Yeah.
I don't think so. We have, I'm not sure how many on hand.
We do it.
Yes.
I think the people should be aware of that, who are interested in shellfishing. It's the building.
Building Book, well, there's several. Building was a, actually an M.D. and a Ph.D. in work for the Division of Marine Fisheries at the beginning of the 1900s, early 1900s. And it was the authority, and believe it or not, is still the authority, on shellfish biology, shellfish culture. He wrote books on cohogs, oysters, scallops, herring runs, the whole nine yards. And his works were out of print, so several years ago, we reprinted them and are selling them.
How much did somebody have to pay, and where could they get them?
You caught me off guard, but my recollection, we have a lot of things going on in my office, but my recollection is that $25, and call the office, 508-375-6690, and ask for a copy of the Building Book. And what we did was we put three or four of the companions together in one book. So you have.
So anybody that's interested in learning more about shellfishing.
Yes.
They could get that book.
Shellfishing, shellfish biology.
Right.
And culture, yes.
Because I know that shellfish constables that have looked at it are really, really impressed with it, and I know that several of them have included in their own library. But I think anybody, anybody that has even a passing interest and wants to learn more about it, could do much worse than get that book.
Absolutely, yes. So give us a call if you'd like.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Will I see you Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the discussion of the performance of Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, Paul Nitz Wiki. Welcome, Paul. Do you have?
I have.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I read that you probably have it good.
I brought the Chairman of the Cape Cod Commission, Roy Richardson.
Yeah, Roy, come on up. How are you today?
Good.
I missed that lunch then.
Welcome back.
Oh, the bread? Well, why don't we start with, the evaluations break down into a few categories, the first being objectives for the coming year that we want to work in a collaborative fashion on. So Sheila had met with Paul prior to our putting this evaluation together, and I guess I should say that the process is that Sheila, as a liaison to the commission, meets with Paul, possibly you, I'm not quite sure. I'm sure, yes, that she did, yes. And then Bill and I prepare our evaluation, and then the Chair takes the three and then compiles them into one. So what you have before you is really a compilation of each of the assessments, evaluation comments and goals of the three of us. And I'm hoping that we all agree that that's what we said. And when we got to goals, which I think is the first place we really want to start, the first one was water quality, and we talked about completing the wastewater management, the regional wastewater management plan.
Yes.
And a plan that we know obviously would have the support of the community, wouldn't work if it didn't, but we put that in there. And continue the watershed tours, I happened to attend the first one last night. I was very impressed. I was very impressed with the comments from the public and the questions. I thought they were very well informed. And I can see why, as going forward, that you would probably modify them based on the kinds of questions you receive and all of that. So being the first, I have to get on the tour list and attend a few more. And then the third, implement defined strategies for dealing with the notice of intent from CLF and the BBC, the Conservation Law Foundation and the Buzzards Bay Coalition. And that's obviously a big priority on the agenda right now. Any other comments on that goal? Anything you might want to take out or add, or expand upon?
No, I mean, it's always so difficult to take your objectives for good year and boil them down into four. But I think that that's certainly the most pressing issue, is the issue of water quality, regional wastewater management plan, potential litigation that's out there, and the watershed tours which have been, which we started this year. So I think those are good measurable objectives.
The second relates to wind and completing the Ocean DCPC by the end of the fiscal year. I think that was your suggestion for a goal related to wind. And there's been so much turmoil recently on wind issues. In fact, Bill told me earlier that Brian Currie called to say that he was filing a DCPC on future wind development and failure. So I don't know what that means.
I think what happened last night is Falmouth Planning Board voted to send a letter to you, the Board of County Commissioners, asking you to designate it.
Oh, I see.
So I would check the mail.
Check the mail.
Well, may I speak to that, that the Planning Board, as the planning board or any board at any county may ask for a discretionary referral to Cape Cod Commission. And I would, without having seen the letter, I would hope that they were prepared to follow through on what they intend. I believe that we had asked that any discretionary referrals that were made from boards other than the elected boards, that the selectmen be advised that they were doing that, so that the selectmen could have an opportunity to comment. And I believe you were on the commission when I was, when this had come up, because I think that was a concern that I had when I was a voting member of the Cape Cod Commission. A concern that I had was when a discretionary referral came in, it didn't have, and I wasn't looking for the approval as much as I was looking for the acknowledgement that the select board or the town council were aware that the referral was being made, so that all of the town from which this referral was occurring would be on notice that it was happening and not reading the paper, if you will, or hearing from our newsletter. Oh, you know, Falmouth has now put in, Barnstable has put in a discretionary referral, and I believe that there's one coming up with Craigville, coming up based upon a referral from the planning board, but with the support of the town council that you received from Barnstable. So in any case, I'll look forward to seeing the letter, but I might suggest.
Yeah, I think we'll wait for the official correspondence. I'm relating a phone call.
I only bring this up because it is related to wind, and I know, although I haven't attended the Assembly's hearings on wind, I know that there's a lot of controversy, not only among people in all the towns, I'm sure, and not just Falmouth, about the citing of wind turbines, but also the concerns of some of the Assembly members too, that some of the issues related to turbines is noise and health issues and all of that are still so new that they weren't really, or didn't feel that they were prepared yet to even make a decision on the RPP.
Well, yeah, I mean, this, it really, it's about water quality, wastewater, wind and economic development. That's where we're coming from. But on the wind side, the Ocean DCPC was nominated by you last June, so that gives us a 12-month period, so we expect to promulgate regulations when that expires.
Last December.
Last December.
Yeah.
So in order to meet that 12-month moratorium, we've been marching along. And we have a policy committee now, a technical advisory committee together, a stakeholder committee, they've all met. We've issued a technical report, or we will be issuing in the next two weeks, a draft technical report, to both the stakeholder committee and the policy committee. That policy committee will be reprinted in January. And for the first time, that policy committee is a committee that consists of elected officials from all 15 towns that are gonna help us deliberate over these issues as it relates to offshore wind, consistent with the direction the state gave us in the ocean measure. And so we have been learning a lot, and we're actually gonna take the state plan further in two areas. One is, you know, some preliminary economic analysis of the wind turbines, but more importantly, we're gonna do a visual assessment piece that the state straight away from, well, because they were given the impossible task of coming up with a plan 18 months, I think. So all of that information is gonna be circulated to the policy committee, but we would expect to promulgate regulations in a May-June timeframe. We may need to extend that a little bit, but all that's gonna be up for consideration in January. So on the land-based side, now that's all offshore. On the land-based side, the commission has always shied away from regulating wind turbines and renewable energy because it's another thing that we want to promote regionally. So we have stayed away from that for the most part. And the technology keeps changing, and the size and the scope and the class of the wind turbines has changed too. But they are controversial projects, and we've seen them in Orleans, in the Gulf Fleet, and Brewster and Harwich, and Falmouth, and Borne. Now, in Borne's, in the case of Borne, there's a large project that's coming forward, seven sizable proposed turbines. And we were in the situation at this point of having that project trigger Cape Cod Commission review as a DRI because of the amount of clearing that was involved, but not having any standards that apply to the turbines. So we developed standards that applied to the turbines. We consulted with Cape Cod Compact, and CIVAC, and the town managers and administrators, and they were pretty clear that they did not want a single threshold for review. So there's actually no threshold in there. We wouldn't have been reviewing turbines except for those that were triggered by some other Cape Cod Commission training. But, and they were general standards, but I thought that they were good standards and would allow us to ask the kind of questions that people really want to ask about these projects, without being overly prescriptive in the specifics of that analysis. So we brought that forward to the Assembly last week. Sorry, so it was a trap time.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And they rejected those standards. And a lot of the testimony was from people that felt that they were gonna be negatively impacted by wind turbines. And I listened to the testimony, and I listened to the rationale of the Assembly, and I'm still trying to make sense of why they would choose no regulation over some regulation. But they clearly felt that the standards did not go far enough, and that they wanted a threshold. So that's clearly a different opinion than most of the stakeholders that we consulted as we developed those standards going forward. So we've taken that testimony back now, and we're working on how we're gonna deal with that going forward. But given the amount of work that staff's putting into the Ocean DCPC and the promulgation of those ordinances in the June timeframe, I think that we'll start to work on a dual track now to bring ordinances forward to the Assembly in that timeframe that are both land-based from a standards perspective and offshore. So that's the timeframe that we're working in right now, but it's very controversial. So what you're seeing is the Assembly that is considering, or at least discussed, the Sandwich Delegate discussed, the nomination of a land-based District of Critical Planting Concern for wind turbines. And there is some movement by some boards on the upper Cape too. And it's not a discretionary referral of a DRI. All, those boards have the ability to nominate these DCPCs on their own, pursuant to the Act. And once they nominate and publish it, that moratorium is in place for 12 months. So that, the DCPC is a very powerful tool, it shouldn't be used lightly. Everybody should sort of consider carefully before they nominate, because it has some really immediate impacts. But we'll have to field these requests as they come in. I think the Assembly's gonna be wrestling with that issue going forward, and I'm pretty sure we will have some sort of formal correspondence from the Falmouth Planning Board that will give us an indication as to how that's proceeding.
There is one concern that I have as I hear this, is that if the boards, the elected boards in the upper Cape had expressed an interest in not having thresholds, I wonder how successfully that was communicated to the Assembly during this process. Perhaps.
Most of the correspondence had to do with town managers, town administrators as it related to threshold, because we're under a short timeframe, so we went to them first. I haven't had a direct conversation with boards of selection up there as they related thresholds, but generally, they don't like them. So I'm not sure that they would be infuriated.
Well, there's the issue of local control and maintaining the ability of a community to, let's say, to decide what they want and where they want to put it. And I view that as something that's important, and I thought that when we change the paradigm, you know, with the Cape Cod Commission, to be more supportive of what people wanted, and then use the power of regulation to, let's say, to support them getting it, that perhaps that wasn't successfully communicated to the Assembly, and that in this process of evaluation, perhaps that needs to be communicated. And part of that, and I think I suggested this to you, is that the member of the Cape Cod Commission who resides in the community where the Assembly member is, should be communicating to that Assembly member the reasons why they supported the forwarding of the regulation, because I think that that might have the kind of impact that we're looking for. Surely, there was some consideration with that. And then finally, although, you know, I respect the idea of creating another committee of elected officials to, let's say, to support the forwarding of an activity, I'd always felt that the Cape Cod Commission's responsibility was the one that would reside in, because you already have the appointed, people who are appointed by these elected boards to represent both the interest of the regions and the interest of the community. And perhaps there needs to, I might suggest to you, as you look at this, as you revisit that to find out where, and I'd suggest to you, why especially, is to where the appointed members of the Cape Cod Commission see themselves with regard to taking responsibility for moving, you know, these important regional processes forward.
I think the members of the commission generally see themselves as appointed volunteers that sit in a quasi-judicial capacity to make recommendations on facts that are presented to them. So I don't think that they oftentimes see themselves as lobbying or advocating positions. And the policy committees that relates to the Ocean DCPC was put together because the requests for development of community wind are anticipated to be municipal requests primarily, and so we really wanted to integrate them into the planning process so that we wouldn't have to, they wouldn't view this as something that was sort of top-down.
I don't want to get really too far afield in this, because the only reason I bring it up is because the statement is so simple, it only has eight words in it, and yet it encompasses a huge, well, no, it's not simple, it implies a whole lot, but that as long as we all understand what it implies.
Elegant, the complexity.
Yes.
Simple in its elegance.
Exactly.
Right.
And the third goal has to do with economic development, which is the strategic regional and local entities that result in acceptable and sustained outcomes.
Yes.
And of course, the high priority is Open Cape and the auxiliary projects that are gonna follow along with Open Cape.
Yeah.
And keeping the SEDS on track and the partnership with IBM. I think those are kind of the really big areas, would you say, in economic development?
They are. Open Cape, the SEDS document has been a tremendously successful document in at least initiating the discussion about regional economic development priorities. So we will be having another SEDS annual update in April. We hope to partner with the Cape Cod Regional Chamber on that and the EDC, so that we can have a larger discussion this year. And part of this is, when I came here three years ago, there was some significant turf issues between the commission, the EDC, and the regional chamber. And I think we've successfully ironed that out. I mean, there really hasn't been any issue over that time. What we need to translate that level of cooperation to the locals now. And so in conjunction with David Willett on the EDC and Wendy Northcross, we've been reaching out to the local chambers, but there are more institutions out there other than just the local chambers. So we're gonna be presenting in front of the local chambers now, and I've made a commitment to visit every one of the local chambers over the next year. But in addition to that, especially on the upper Cape, all four upper Cape towns have EDICs of one wave shape, some of the BFDC, the SEIC, the Falmouth EDIC, and the Mashpee EDIC. And there are some great projects that are happening there. And those EDICs are essential to the regional policy plan and the development of these regional economic centers. So we actually met with Sally Riggs today. And so as part of that SEDS annual update, what we're gonna do is have an invitation-only afternoon session with all of the EDIC members, the local chamber members, and the members of the EDCs that advise boards of selectmen and town councils. They'll all be invited and get them in, all of those local economic development actors in the room at the same time. And so I think we'll be able to take some of the lessons learned about cooperating on economic development on a regional level, and hopefully be able to translate that on the local level, so everybody understands their roles and responsibilities, and it'll make us more competitive as a region to bring additional money to support economic development activities.
On separate correspondence, I got the notice of their intention to, let's say, to reach out to the membership.
Yes.
Okay, I pointed out to them that if they are, if they're active chamber executives, they should already know where their needs are, and they should be able to communicate them now rather than waiting for a listening pool. So I'd be curious as to whether anybody's pointed at. They're meeting a week or so, I guess.
Yeah, what we've decided to do is that we're gonna meet and all together and run, and have a presentation and talk about these issues generally. But then after that, I think it's still important to get out there and meet with the local chambers on their turf with their members.
Absolutely.
While we're on the topic of the SEDS, I made a comment under the leadership area, was that using the SEDS document, which is a federal requirement.
Yes.
Where we're required to provide as an agent of change, I think is actually an amazing experience that you initiated with the SEDS. Because, as you know, I've been on the EDC for a long time, 14 years, something like that. And I know that in previous, well, and it's only due, what, every five years?
Every five years.
Every five years. But I think there were two prior to this one. And it was more of its, at that time, we sought more the task than of taking it and making something out of it. And I think this time, you came along and looked at it and said, this could really be an agent for change, and found a way to do that. So I think that's a big plus in my mind, so I wanted to mention that.
Well, thank you, but the strength.
Yeah, not a long time.
Jesus, you know, when we were putting this together, and we were trying to get some money out in the street in a couple of weeks, it doesn't seem like this 14 years ago.
You should read some of the blogs.
The strength of the SEDS document comes in the grassroots nature of the effort to put together. There was no top-down strategy from the commission. These were, you know, a lot of institutions and organizations and people out there that knew what the regional priorities were. All we did was facilitate that discussion and organize it and corral it into one document. So the strength of the document really has very little to do with me or the Cape Cod Commission anymore, it's the strength of the people that were involved.
Right, well, that's true.
Well, that's, that's true. You, you involved them, so that was, that was a unique approach, and that was collaboration and, and a very good result, so.
And then the last one is communication, and we've already talked about this, but we're inviting you to meet with us on a monthly basis, so that we get the benefit of, of the activities that are occurring with the Commission and the community, which sometimes we, we don't see.
I embrace that.
Yes.
Yes, Marie.
Thank you very much for that.
It's an invitation that is more of a, shall I say, a command performance.
Yes.
Well, actually, it's because, you know, we're out there too, and, and more often than not, we have opportunities to really talk about the good things that are happening and by local carry, and the Commission is a huge part of that. So we can help bring that, that positive message when we know more about what's happening. So I think we can be a, a vehicle for that.
And I think at the Commission, a lot of times we just, we get caught up in the work, and, and we really am pushing the Commission to do more, and I think that we're doing more now than we've ever done in the past. But sometimes maybe you forget to stop and let people know what, how much progress you're making and what the milestones are that you've accomplished. I look forward to those.
Good. Okay. And then underneath this section here is mid-year review objectives, and I would really like to schedule an April review now, because come along April, and it'll be May and June, and the next thing you know, we'll be saying, oh, it's time to do the annual review. I think it would be a great idea to do April as a kind of a, it's not quite the mid-year, but it's close enough. That, and we'll set up a date that's, Maggie's writing that down.
I'd say we just nail the date down, because you guys have issues.
What?
Keeping, keeping dates.
Yes.
Yes, put it in there now, Maggie.
But at least put it in, and we'll commit to it.
April 6th.
April 6th.
That would be an afternoon meeting, 1:05.
Okay.
Put that right in there.
I would, but I forgot my phone.
I know, I did too, so.
See? April 6th, Paul, you're, you have it?
Yeah, okay. Who knows? But at least, at least we'll have a date.
Okay.
Yeah. Two pages beyond that, we have a critical areas of performance. And there are four: leadership, planning and organization, communication, problem-solving, and decision-making. And I think, I mean, you, you can see for yourselves, but I think that overall, I think it's more, I think they rate anywhere between more than satisfactory and outstanding in every single category, actually, but particularly so in leadership. And I, I think, we've talked a lot about this already, is this whole concept of leadership, which, and I have to say, when, last week, when Dave Willard and Felicia Penn came in, David's the chair of the EDC and Felicia's the vice chair, and they came in under public comment, because they knew that we were in the process of, during this evaluation, and they wanted to, to get their comments, and because the EDC has now a much closer relationship with the Commission, because the activities are more compatible, I guess you could say. I mean, they work together, particularly with the fact that the EDC has funded this SEDS project. So they, they're the ones who really brought out, I think, and that we agree on this, is the visionary. Not everybody can, lots of people can be visionaries, but not everyone can take all those concepts and those ideas and, and plans and outcomes and actually put them and make them work, actually, you know, do the work. And very few people can, I know of two, and Paul's one. And that there's not very many people who can, who have the ability to be the visionary and also to make it happen.
Yeah, moving a piece of paper across from the outbox to the inbox, I mean, inbox to the outbox, is perhaps the most important skill you could have, because a lot of people have great ideas.
Well, I think...
Delivering them is the problem.
That's right. And David, I, I said your ears must have been burning, because that's one of the key things that David and Felicia talked about. And what makes them so enthused and excited about being on the EDC is to really see, see a vision and know that it's, that it's, there is a plan to make it work. So I think that leadership and the planning and organization to make things happen really go together.
If I can just add to that, the other comment, just to let you know that you have friends in the room, was that I think Bill asked the question, do you feel like you're being taken over by the Cape Cod Commission, or that your role is diminished? And they, they were quite emphatically against that idea. To the contrary, they felt that their role was even enhanced, because you do look to them as an advisory, as a sounding board, and that they are more productive because of that relationship. And that is a skill, it's very non-threatening, and many people, I'm sure, in the beginning felt threatened that there was going to be that merger of the two, two entities. And so, you know, again, and that is, that's a very good skill to be able to have and to actually carry it out, where people just don't feel like they were taken over, but they have equal standing and a lot of input into the decisions being made.
Perhaps the most important thing was that they came in voluntarily.
Yes.
They were welcome, but they, you know, they weren't invited, they felt it was important to get a lot of that stuff across, and I think that, that speaks well for you and to you.
Well, just because I put this together doesn't mean I have to be the one that talks the whole time, so please comment. I mean, I, it's there, you already see it, but also it's important to have the public know and understand what we're talking about and how we value...
We're, we're intending to keep him on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I, I think that's number one.
We're intending, yeah.
And, and we, we're expecting him to actually get the stuff done that we've asked him to do. Okay, we don't have any, we don't have any reservations about that.
And we're confident that he will, right?
No reservations?
No.
And that, and that if he doesn't, we'll beat him up.
He probably knows that, too.
I would imagine Roy might have something to say.
I'm happy to hear what you've had to say. I'm glad to see that you realize the complexity of the issues that face us. And I'm also happy to hear that you recognize the fact that the person we have leading the Cape Cod Commission is not only a visionary, but he is also capable of taking the many laws, rules, regulations, and integrating them in a manner that the common person can understand what they mean. And I think perhaps what's happening in recent time at the Commission is that, and it relates a bit to the DCPCs and that sort of thing, that our real job is community character and the resources. And I, there's a help approach to that. And then the other thing is, I drove over here, I was wondering what I might have to contribute, and I think you only need to take a look at the staff, because the organization is only as good as the people that work for it. And I don't know how Paul does it, he's never shared with me anything about how he searches out these people, but they're worth their weight in gold, and they, they produce, the product they produce on a regular basis, without even pausing for breath, is absolutely amazing. And as a Commission member, you know, as we approach things, I mean, to have what you need when you need it is really remarkable.
I think the other significant piece, too, is changing the whole public perception of the Commission. That's been such a, I mean, it's obviously a, a task and action, so to speak, I mean, it's, it's, it will be a forever thing to do, always trying to, to keep that perception of, of an organization that's there to help the communities do what they need to do, and not, and not fight them alone away. And I think that perception has changed significantly.
Very much so.
And I, I don't want to cite all the examples, because I think we know what they are, but there are a couple of towns that have fought times to secede, if you, from the Commission, and that's not happened. And Paul and his staff have worked with them on projects that help them see the value that the Commission brings to the projects they want to do, and realize they can't do it on their own. And they learn from being able to work with the Commission. So I think all of that is very, very positive.
And indeed, and the most recent example is the phone call from Brian Currie, saying that he doesn't have the resources in Falmouth to do what he thinks would be useful to the people of Falmouth, but believes that the Cape Cod Commission does have that resource and can support what he needs. So I, I take that as, you know, as a, as an understanding, as well as a, as well as a vote of confidence in the value that the Cape Cod Commission has, not only to Falmouth, but to the other 14 towns.
Could I ask for a little bit more elaboration, I mean, since we're here, just to talk about, you know, the future in the IBM partnership?
How much money is it worth?
Are you, are you open to discussing that now, or would you rather wait for another time?
Well, can we finish?
Okay, yeah, well, do you want to? Okay.
Sure.
Do you want to, what do you want to say?
No, I, I've read through the comments, and I've taken all the comments, and I'm, and I'm humbled and I'm touched, you know, especially by David and Felicia's actions. But, you know, it's, it's a great job, and it's a great place with great people. So it's an honor to come to work every day. And that's the truth. And, but I, I wouldn't qualify for some, for any of these statements if it weren't for the hard work of my staff and the hard work of the Commission members. It's an incredible group of people, those 19 volunteers on the, on the Commission. And my staff is just exemplary, I mean, I ask them to do impossible things every day, and, and they, they never disappoint. So it's, it's a wonderful position to be in, and, you know, I, I take all criticism to heart. And I know that it's been, we do so much, and some of, and so much of it is controversial, that at times it's hard not to stub your toe every once in a while. And I try to learn from all of those episodes, too, and I know that I, I have a lot that I can improve on as the executive director of the Cape Cod Commission, especially as it relates to communication. You know, I think that that's an area that if I can, if I could single out and focus on one area for improvement next year, that's where it would be. I know I can do a better job there. And that's my commitment to you, and I thank you for your comments, and for the opportunity to lead such a, such a great organization.
Well, thank you. I, I've always believed, when I was a manager, that the staff's success was my success. If they did well, and they were successful out of them, I was successful, because I had them in some way be able to do that. And I think that's kind of where you're coming from when you say that. And I would say the same thing. If we're successful as a Commissioner, it's because you and, you know, Mark and Maggie are being successful as well. And if they're not, then nothing's going to work.
No, especially my, my senior staff. I mean, I am in a, I am a macro manager, I am an incredible delegator. But I'm asking these people to do it on their own, and they rarely need correctional, and they always deliver. And that's, I'm incredibly fortunate to be in that position.
Well, as long as you recognize the difference between delegation and dumping, you're all set.
I didn't say that I recognize the difference. But you could talk to the staff, I think she'll...
Yeah, yeah, I did. I did talk to a lot of the staff. And also, you're being, you're, you're presenting in the APA conference.
Yeah, we've got three presentations in Boston.
Yeah, that's coming up.
And we've got a local tour that we've worked with Brian Currie and Falmouth on.
Yeah, Sharon told me about that last night. That sounds really interesting.
No, we look forward to making those presentations, too.
Do you have a, do you have to coordinate the local transportation for that?
There is a transportation company.
If you want to talk to, tell me to hear about that.
I think Brian did already, because he's on the RTI.
Make sure that they, that they're treated well as they show up.
I hope so. We've been treated well everywhere else we've gone, so.
Now, you wanted to hear about IBM.
Well, if you can take a few minutes just to, to go over it, I mean, I have an understanding, but I think...
We have a contractual relationship with IBM now for a smart Cape Cod initiative. And the concept really is to work on the backbone of Open Cape. Open Cape's laying that, that broadband highway for information. But that's not going to be any good unless there's a brain on top of it. And so what, what kind of information are we going to organize, and how are we going to present it, and how are we going to share it, becomes really the multiplier from an economic development perspective of that tool. So what we are working on with IBM right now is trying to establish the framework for a platform that will use Open Cape, sit on top of Open Cape, a platform for sharing information. And so we're looking at the possibility of, of creating a strategic information officer, somebody regionally who can take in information and find ways to, to offer higher value services to the towns for lower costs. And as a major component of that, though, what we'd like to do is to create a Center for Water Quality Excellence, who've worked with a lot of institutions, Protestant Center for Coastal Studies, Elizabeth Research Center, HUI, and the rest of them, that collect a ton of water quality information, whether it's in, about coastal waters, marine ecosystems, freshwater systems, drinking water. But none of that information is coordinated and in one central location.
Sounds like you need a cloud.
It, it is a cloud of sorts, that, that we're working on. And so organizing that information and scrubbing it and allowing it to talk to one another, and then being able to develop algorithms to ask it information, will give us much better public policy. Almost every policy that, that we implement at the Commission is tied in some way, shape, or form to water, and the protection of water and water quality. So that will be a huge issue going forward. But it also has a significant ancillary benefit in that those kind of databases don't exist. And when you have preeminent national institutions like HUI and NBL, to provide them the opportunity to metaphorically swim around in that data, gives them the opportunity to develop new technologies. And the possibility is that some of these new technologies might allow us to deal with some of our pressing challenges, like wastewater, in a less expensive, less, less capital-intensive way. So I think there's tremendous promise of organizing this. You know, another potential ancillary benefit or public benefit is, you know, we've heard a lot about the Mass Estuaries Project and that science. Now, if those data sets were available publicly and that was, and were transparent, I think we'd have fewer people that would be questioning the science at this point, and more people that would recognize that they're not really questioning the science, they're questioning the regulatory interpretation of the science. So I think we could have avoided a lot of the problems that I think could potentially be costly problems with this kind of open, transparent, cloud database on water quality, and create a Center for Water Quality Excellence here that will contribute to innovation of new technologies here, and allow us to solve the problems related to water quality on the Cape in a way that make us more sustainable and a national, if not an international leader.
Part of, you know, part of the issue for me is to make sure that you have a standard method of data collection, so that there can be, let's say, sharing of the data, rather than having unique data sets that are only applicable in very narrow contexts. If you don't do that, then we're going to be, be faced with seeing data go, you know, go out of date completely. You know that, that I've always felt that the problem with the Estuary Project was this black box that was, you know, that was not available. But I believe that all of that information is now available. However, I have heard offline that although we've been told that it's been shared, it hasn't been accessible at the places where it's supposed to be shared. And I wonder if you could look into that?
I think that's going to be part of the discussion. What IBM is doing right now is having phone conversations and interviews with stakeholders. And then we'll be having a workshop in January, pretty quickly, to convene the stakeholders around sharing water quality information, to try to build some consensus on how we're going to do that. And those are the kind of technical questions that certainly IBM is more, has more capacity to deal with than we do. And so that's why we look to them as a partner. Now, globally, IBM has just dumped another $50 million into their Smart Cities program. And so there's another challenge grant out there now, with the potential of providing an additional $400,000 worth of technical assistance for perhaps a phase two of the water quality study. But also, once we have this platform, it's not just water quality that can come in, we have a regional assessing study that's going to issue in December, and so we're going to have that information there. And there's economic development information that we have that we'd like to share. So any number of these information modules that we can present in the cloud and make accessible and transferable, and I think it holds a great deal of promise. And my personal belief is that the future of regional government is really in information, it's not in competing to provide direct services. It's not, that only means the competition with the towns.
My, my vision next year is to actually see more of this My, my vision next year is to actually see more of this virtual meeting activity, more of a virtual county government so that more people can participate. We, you know, we are moving towards more, let's say, more transparent agendas, but until, in my opinion, we have something that you can access if you want to stay in Falmouth and find out what's going on here, that you can have the opportunity not only to view it passively because you're, you're looking at the tape, but have an opportunity to participate. So that, to me, would draw in all 15 towns. And I think this is also a part of what Open Cape's promise is supposed to be.
It is, it's the promise of Open Cape, but even if you look at sort of assessing, I mean, the nature of that job has changed dramatically over the last decade and it's much more software-intensive now. And, yeah, a lot of the communities, especially the Lower Cape communities, recognize this as low-hanging for things they might want to, to look to, to regionalize. So that's about information and providing, we'll be able to provide a higher quality service to these towns at a lower cost than their current pay. And so that's how things naturally will come to a regional economy scale. And so it's ultimately essential that we build the broadband initiative and a database on top of that that can support that because I really believe that's the future of, of regional government.
Another thing about the assessing that I found interesting in that regional meeting with the Lower Cape Selectmen was that several of the assessors of those towns came and it wasn't pushback. They actually saw the benefit of regionalizing what they do. They weren't threatened by that. And I, and I give them credit and I give the towns credit for going there. And, you know, they, they were, you know, they could see the benefits.
Well, I can't, if we had a uniform assessing information available to us at the regional level, which we, we don't now, and we had uniform water quality information available, I can't tell you how much more powerful our request for grant money would be and I, and how much more exact our planning could be and how I would have to spend less in order to build the infrastructure that we need to create a sustainable Cape Cod.
You know, we went through the same discussion yesterday when I was in a human service meeting over at the Town of Barnstable about the importance of having this type of consistent data collection that had more of a, let's say, a universal application because of well-thought-out definitions that were involved in the project process rather than just collecting information and trying to qualify it, or let's say, let's say, do something with it afterwards.
Yeah. But these are exciting times.
Yeah, we're thinking, too, in terms of our budget processes upcoming very soon, next month, January. And as Open Cape is moving along, it has to be up and running, what, in another two years.
Yeah.
And that we need to start planning for our own infrastructure in terms of hardware and software here for the county so that it, because we're not going to be able to do it all at once, but we need to begin to plan to phase in what we're going to need here in the county to handle support some of these initiatives that we're working on.
No, it's important and Open Cape, as you know, we sort of doubled up in some of our cubicles to provide them some space and they're using a conference room. And they're working hard and they're going to have their vendors on, on board pretty soon and contractors. So that's going to happen. I feel very confident Dan Gallagher and his crew that they're going to get that done. So I think it's important for us to start thinking right now how we're going to use this system.
Right, right. And we have to be able to have that conversation.
What we need to support it.
We need, on board, because they only have three people on board that's moving that process. And when they move up to it, I think we have to think about how much, how many of the resources that are currently being available to them, illustratedly, how much of that is going to be actually, have the ability to be transferred without hurting your, your basic organization.
Yeah. Those are discussions that we're probably going to have to have soon because I think they hope to be in that building by the end of summer.
All things that organization is the key to effective performance, I think.
Okay. Anything else? We could keep on talking about all the good stuff in the afternoon.
Right. That's why we need you once a month so we can-
Yeah.
My pleasure.
Well, thank you very much.
I just needed a signature from Paul and the three of you on one document and I'll give you all copies.
Did you?
I didn't see you. You were inside?
Yeah.
And I was walking.
What do you want to say? So what am I supposed to say?
Under managing, I can see from here, right here.
You know what we do?
Now I'll get you a cup of, a pop of the milk tea.
Okay.
Right next, this fine, right underneath each other, so.
Over here.
And that will be, it will be good job. Thank you so much for coming on.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you, Paul. Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure, Roy.
Yeah.
Good to see you. So you enjoyed that?
I'm oblivious.
Okay, thank you.